I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Grimminger.
Here.
Alderman Mooney.
Here. Sorry.
Alderman Donovan, Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ruzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Very good. Have a motion for approval of our agenda tomorrow?
Do you want me to approve the revised agenda?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
You can share mine. Very good. It'll take us to the city administrator's report.
I brought last month's, or our last meeting. I think I got the wrong page. Okay, so at the last meeting, Mark's not here.
Where's Buck at?
Dude.
There he comes.
That's on cue.
Oh, did you start early?
No. Well, we started.
Sorry, I'm a minute late.
That's all right.
Oh, there's an accident. That's just delayed like ten minutes.
There you go. Good excuse.
So anyway, our last meeting I mentioned, and the consideration of some major road improvements, the city attorney suggested we do that in a work session. So I've been working on some updated information for the work session that we're going to have this evening. The tripping down, the trash pump was delivered, and Steve had an immediate use for it. I'm going to let him describe the benefits that this brings to the program. Gary also has made a major equipment purchase with the skid steer loader, and he's going to describe how many man-hours that has saved. So if you just counted man-hours and improved efficiency, these two kind of major purchases are going to serve us well. The accountants have been here for four days, and Sue and Pam worked with them, and I to a lesser extent. And there are a couple of things that they found that are so minor that it's almost not worth mentioning, but they have to mention them. And it's just ledger entries where something came in, a grant came in, and it had to be received, and then posted over here, and it didn't get done. And, you know, in a few months, they'll come in and describe all of that to you. But other than those, just very minor inconsistencies, they complimented us, and that would be Sue and Pam, again, on their excellent record-keeping. They've been receiving calls from the Corps of Engineers asking about easements for the accessways to the levee. And there are three. One is at the south closure structure that takes you up to the pump station, crosses a railroad track. Two is what we call Division Street. And the third is up by the north gate that was taken out by the railroad and later put back at the levee district's consistence. And they're asking to see easements or agreements with the railroad for these crossings. We have looked at every piece of paper the city owns related to the construction of the levee. We found a lot of temporary easements and a lot of language about access, but we haven't found what I think they're looking for. And nobody who was there at the time and working on it kind of has any knowledge of that. The question that has been raised by some is, the Corps of Engineers were building the levee, wouldn't they have whatever it is that they're looking for? They say they've looked through everything they have, and they haven't found it either. The issue, I think the only issue, is should the trail be built on top of the levee? How do you access it at the south end of the trail? And we had always envisioned it, because we knew of that problem on the access road on the south end, going off where Market dead ends, you're already across the railroad tracks, and then crossing the old creek bed and getting up on the levee that way. I informed the guy I'm talking to about that, but he said, "I'm just the real estate guy. All the design people are deployed to wherever they are, Puerto Rico, and we'll have to get back to it." So that's kind of a little interesting little other delay in the process. You've been made aware of the problem with the railroad crossing on the south side of the old Lucent Building that Donovan, the do-it center, has used for access to the railroad, to their property that the railroad has taken out, apparently doesn't intend to put back in. Bob has begun using Chadwell Lane as his access. He can't, they can't make that turn going on to 10th Street with the length of their trailer. And so he was a little concerned about the bridge over the creek at Chadwell Lane. Every three years, the Department of Transportation inspects and rates the bridges. Now, they don't actually give load limits. They don't do that level of analysis, but they inspect them for structural integrity. And that bridge is in good shape. It's, it's, has no deficiencies. But I did ask them to, sent an email off to the guy. I talked to the area engineer, and he said I had to talk to the bridge guy. And he's off work this week to maybe do a little more investigation and make sure we don't have a load limit problem. But on the report that we got in 2016, there are no comments such as that, which leads to the conclusion that they think it's adequate to handle what the state standard is for bridges, and that's a load of 80,000 pounds, which is...
Yeah. Herzog built that.
Yeah, I was about ready to say, I wonder if we can talk to Herzog and see what the load limit is on. Herzog Construction built the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, and my recollection is that they had the pile driver there for a good while. They went down to Bedmore. My recollection.
I will talk to him then.
Yeah. Charlie Herzog, Paul, we know.
The, I can't conceive that it's going to be a problem, so that's good news.
I think more of a problem, I would think, is be the intersection we have coming in and out on that hill.
Yeah.
I mean, trucks, big trucks are coming in and out of there now, that's...
But we're going to address that too.
Well, as soon as we decide how we're going to spend our money, that's one of the items. And we already have 75,000 from the Special Road District sitting there waiting for us to use, and that was where we intended to use it, so we'd only have to possibly supplement that if that, you know.
Yeah, silly question, but I'm getting right off the topic here, but are we going to widen that? How much?
Well, it hasn't been designed.
Okay.
But we aren't going to widen the road, because we don't even have room to widen the road. But we are going to widen the intersection, and we're going to realign it so it comes in at the highway at 90 degrees.
Right.
And then put a radius on the intersection so we can at least get a turn lane on the exiting, you'll have two lanes going out, one's a turn lane, the other's a traffic lane, to turn right. And in preliminary conversations with the adjacent property owners, they have been cooperative. So I think it'll, I think it'll go well if we decide to do it.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Bring Gary up to the, Gary Roth?
Good evening.
Hi, Gary.
Once again, we start to report with mowing, but we are finished mowing for the year.
Maybe.
So, let's hope. We'd added a lot of downtown cleanup for events. One weekend had us pretty strapped with art wall, Heritage Days, Deja Vu, and the band festival, trying to get all the areas cleaned up. Put up a tent again for Heritage Days, did Memorial Cemetery for Deja Vu. We molded and striped the soccer fields for the last weekend of that. We got our fence, the front fence at the shop finished, the rolling gates are installed, and Dick, we moved the dumpster.
Thanks.
We started building our rack for our salt spreaders. That'll be completed in the next few days. We put some rock on the parking lot at the soccer field. We started servicing the trucks and equipment to get ready for winter. We replaced a stop sign at Main and Market that was run over by a lost 18-wheeler. We had a sign vandalism this past weekend, and have to, we got all the important signs backed up, the other ones I had to order, so as soon as they get in, they'll go back up.
Were the signs damaged? Were the signs themselves damaged?
Yeah. Continued brush site, running the street sweeper as much as we can, and then we did asphalt. You guys got to list all the roads we did. And like Martin said, with the skid steer, before, we would pothole about six tons of asphalt in a day. With the machine, we've been doing 12 and 14 tons a day.
Gary, are we going to do some more patching yet? Are we going to do some more patching?
Yeah, hopefully a couple of days yet this coming week before the weather gets too bad, while the plant's still open.
Where else are you looking at?
We got some up on Memorial that the mayor just showed me. There was some more on 4th Street that needs to be done. And I got a list, off the top of my head, I don't remember everything. We got some on Walnut to do.
And instead of the employees, when they're informed they're going to be doing asphalt, going, "Oh, oh, oh,"
Yeah.
They actually look forward to it?
Yeah, we did three days in a row, not this week, but past week, and they wanted to know if we could do it a fourth, so.
Gary, I was, for some reason, I was under the impression we were going to do a lot more patching than what we're doing. Is this all we had planned, or are we running out of time?
Well, there was really not a lot of plan that I was aware of, just whatever's there that needs to be done before winter hits, and...
So if you have knowledge of something, that's telling? Call the pothole hotline.
I got one today. I got a call at City Hall, and that's what it was about. Yeah, so...
What's the pothole hotline numbers?
3507.
883?
Yep.
3507.
Is that your number?
No. You can call me at City Hall if you want to. I'll pass the word along.
1-800-POTHOLE.
Can you leave messages at City Hall at 39?
Yeah. You can leave messages on the pothole.
On that, on that 3507, it's got a machine too.
Okay, good.
Questions, comments?
How many signs were damaged, and how much do you think we're looking at here? That's what I mean, compensating, right?
I believe we would have to ask the men in blue.
But there was block these signs?
Yeah, there was eight signs taken out.
And that was a vandalism?
Yeah, they ran over them purposely.
Really?
The ones that broke off, they kept, and...
Okay.
Did you get those back?
But it was all recovered, but they're all...
Mangled?
Yeah.
I was under the impression there was probably a few more than that.
There was eight.
Okay.
We thought at first there was more of it.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's what I...
Yeah, we thought at one point that it was 10, but it wound up only being eight.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Like Martin said, I'm going to go ahead and start off with the update on the pump. We started off the other, yesterday, pumping our lime lagoons dry so sludge can be land Last month, we previously, in some of my reports, you saw where we were dewatering the lime ponds. What that is, we have a few two-inch pumps where we set down there, and we basically pumped for about three weeks straight. When I called Martin yesterday while we were using the new pump, we actually had to shut it off because we were running out of water.
After how many hours?
After about 15 minutes.
Wow.
So, and Martin, after you left, by the time you made it back here, we were done. So...
He called me and said, "What time are you going to come?" I said, "Well, I'm on my way." And he goes, "Well, we're running out of water."
Yeah. In the, while we were pumping the other ones down with the other pumps, one of them actually wore out, so we got to rebuild it. So I'm sure it took a toll on the other two.
What were you pumping out?
The lime lagoons down there by the wastewater plant.
What's that do to our pump?
It's clean water.
Okay. I see lime and water, I don't...
Yeah, yeah, we're just pumping the clear water off the top.
Okay.
Got a small lagoon and a larger one, and they've got to put it in, one, and they put it back into the plant, and it...
I need to do a visit down there, is what I'm going to do.
Come on down.
I'm bad.
I invite all of you.
Yes.
Other than that, just preparing for land application of the bio solids from the wastewater plant, land application of the lime from the wastewater plant, and lots of maintenance inside the water plant itself. This time of year is when we do all our painting and touching up. There's no humidity, no condensation in the plant at this time, so...
So those are lime solids, and they're going to be used?
Yes.
How's that applied? Are they going to get it out of there?
Yeah, they pack a trailer down in there, it's got a mixing head on it, mixes it up to a slurry, and they pump it onto a truck and haul it out liquid. And from there, it goes to a farmer's field where it's injected.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Steve, that patch over on Emerald, whenever that was, is that something you've got to go back and do, or does, is the Highway Patrol, or Highway Department?
That's actually a temporary patch. Modot required us to put on there. The pipe that's under the Emerald right now is just a four-inch cast iron line.
Right.
Modot requires it to be in an encasement. The pipe is not. So in my budget this year, I budgeted for the engineering and the replacement of that line. So as soon as it gets engineered, it'll be repaired back to...
Is that the one?
By roads.
Right, by roads, that was last year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Or another break the other night, didn't you?
Yeah, it was under the sidewalk, though. We didn't get it out in the road.
But you'll bore that, right? I was thinking the patch itself is sinking. Are they going to, is that now up to them, or do we have to come back and fix that?
I assume I will have to contact Bowman's on that. It's in Modot right away, and they require to contact control, sign control company, and set up a big engineered plan of how to flow traffic during the work.
Gee.
But they, they at one time didn't want us to patch that, did they?
They didn't want me to dig in the road.
Right. But then afterwards, then they didn't want us to patch, did they?
No, they want us, they insisted we repair it.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That was one location they required me to replace the asphalt as it was when I removed it. And at that location, the asphalt was 22 inches thick.
Wow.
When I need 24.
Yeah. I'll speak to Bowman and see if we can get another layer put on.
Another layer, okay.
What's that?
Another layer on it, you'll get it.
I, it's just so cool.
Yeah, it's awesome, yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
If our chief has, be at his other job tonight, but he can't be here and present his report, I talked to him about his trip, and he said it was exhausting. Said they, they got there, about 3:00 in the afternoon, and worked till 5:00, going over line after line after line on the spacks, and got back up at 8:00 the next morning and didn't finish until 5:00, going over line after line after line. And you say they found two or three things that they had included that we didn't want. And a couple of things that we did want that weren't included, he said it's going to wash out, so it shouldn't be any difference in the price, but it's going to be exactly what we're looking for. So he was encouraged by the visit. Carla has an obligation that will prevent her from being here tonight, that her report is submitted to you, and it's self-explanatory.
Kenny's report also, on the back end, the highest O question, he answered pretty well, and the, I bought the truck and the payment schedule and everything. So... All righty. Any questions on those two? Takes us into public comments. Sam? Please adjust that microphone, too, a little bit.
Okay, my name is Sam Ewing. I'm at 28 South Main. I've been here several times before, related to the property next to me. Before I get started on that, I would like to thank mayor and city employees and the aldermen. Sometimes we disagree with you, sometimes we get mad at you, but we do appreciate you. So thank you for your service. There's not much to report that I can see in terms of the building next to me. I'm still having significant paint come off the building into my driveway. Weeds have been lessened because of, it's been cut a little bit regularly. Snakes in my yard have increased. And ultimately, the front looks a lot better due to some work. So we thank you for that. But I'm still getting runoff from the roof in the back. I'll be glad to give Carla a picture. I took it while it was raining on a downpour, and had about a foot of water coming off that roof onto my driveway. Luckily, I've got a positronic drain there, and it goes out to the back, but it's absolutely ridiculous to have to deal with that on a yearly basis. I'm just asking that this group do something. I came here over a year ago, and there's been nothing done, absolutely nothing. And I was assured at that meeting, we'll take care of it. I went and talked to the judge because I knew that the person that lives there has a warrant out, and basically, he said, "There's nothing that he can do. They're not going to serve the warrant up there, they're not going to look for..." And so I asked him about the situation, and he says, "Well, if things happen and we get her here, she hasn't got the money to do anything about it, so we can't do anything about it." So ultimately, we're in a kind of a catch-22 situation. We've got, I've got a person next to me that will not improve her property, that's not held accountable for a property, and yet I'm held accountable for mine. So there's a difference there. I don't know what Missouri state law states about that. I know in terms of taxes that she, I think she's paid up. But I think that there comes a time when you're going to have to start finding some mechanism to hold people accountable when over and over again, there's nothing to be done. I don't know if it's fines that you have to levy on that individual, I don't know the law in terms of that, but I think this is something you're going to have to discuss, whether it be a fine that if something's not being taken care of, the property has to, there needs to be work on it, that you fine her on a monthly basis and it be added to her taxes? And then if it keeps going and going and going up, she's got to pay that first before she pays her taxes. I, I'm just throwing out some ideas here, but I think there's something has to be done because, to be honest with you, that's still a very, a detractment from my downtown. I cannot tell you how many people just look at that building when they go by after seeing some of the good historical buildings that we have here, and look at that and just shake their head. As long, and also residents that discuss it. So I'm asking you again to put your heads together and have something, a concrete plan of attack here. Again, I thank you for your work. I know this is a hard situation, but I've dealt with it now for close to eight years, and the last two years, there's nothing been done. So I'd just like to see a little bit of movement in some way, in some minor way. I want you to be fair with this individual, but I do want you to hold these people, and she's not the only one, responsible in town for their own problem. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
I'm Tim Conley at 467 Washington. I didn't plan on talking, and I may get tongue-tied in a minute, but I started complaining about this property in 1994, and going through you all to take care of it. And there's a lot, you, you're experts at, you're the, you are the experts at looking busy, but nothing is accomplished. And it's a shame that we have these, the same thing was true of the house that I'm living in. And that was an eyesore, too. I took 10 big dumpsters, the biggest of dumpsters they had, out of that little bitty house. And, and, and when I restored the academy, that was a dump then, and it was stored, they, it was full, up to the, up to the roof. So please, I don't know what you do, but do it. And, and I don't care about, I couldn't care less about the homeowner, because she's not a resident here, and she's just left this dump for us to live with. And it just must be taken care of.
Thank you very much, Tim. Anyone else? Public comments?
Can I mention one more?
Yes, come to the podium, please.
I forgot to mention this. I think I told the mayor, and he may have forgotten, and I did not tell City Hall. We have a tree in front of my property.
Yes.
And it's not my tree, it's the city's tree. And if you look at the concrete, I think the city has looked at it before, the concrete is moving. It's going to break. If it was my tree, I would take it down. I'm going to, at one point in time, I'm going to have to think about taking that river birch down that I have. But that tree is damaging a pretty darn-good sidewalk, and it's, can be saved right now, the sidewalk. But if you let it go a little bit further, we're going to have some more damage in that, and it could, you can already trip over it. So I would, I would suggest that somebody come down there and look at it. I talked to Yvonne next to me. She doesn't want to see it gone, but, you know, at some point in time, you have to just, you have to cut bait. And I think it's about that time with that tree, it's really creating some damage there. So I'd like to have somebody come down from the street department and look at it and make a determination. I'm not a professional, but it looks pretty bad.
But that's an ash tree, isn't it?
I don't know if I really can call it an ash tree. It's, it's not a pretty tree.
I think it's an ash.
It looks like a scrub tree, two or three of the limbs.
It's in a...
It's in the, it's in the square that you had for the trees.
The tree that was, that is there was intentionally planted when...
Right.
That sidewalk was put in. I don't know what it is, because one tree looks like a known entity.
But it's not a pretty tree, but, and I love trees. But something needs to be done with that, or somebody's, that sidewalk's going to go, and somebody's, somebody's already run into the, to a limb. uh, somebody's already run into the, to a limb and they trimmed it back. I came down to City Hall and I mentioned it, and within thirty minutes, they were down there trimming it, and thank you for that, uh, because they responded really well to that, but it's decent. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam, I'm sorry, I, he did show it to me, and I understand what's going on there, and there's, I had a complaint too, I had another lady, I was caught at City Hall, and I have a sidewalk that's up about this, and an older gentleman fell down there over the weekend, so, uh, down on the corner, right across from the shomi shop, next to the, the, there's a, I went and looked at it, and the concrete, it's not bad, but it's about a inch and a half or two inch lip where the concrete, and there's not, I don't think the tree's done, I think the concrete's settled, so...
Is that by the little CD carry down there?
Yeah, yeah. Anyone else? No questions? I was looking at your consent, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Takes us to old business, uh, bill number 4199, this is second reading, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve Fiscal Year 2018 Budget relating to the General Fund Number 10, Department Number 11, Legislation.
Motion's approved.
Second. We have a roll call vote.
Alderman Grimminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, bill number 4199 now becomes ordinance 4132.
Takes us to bill number 4200, an ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, to be held April 3rd, 2018, and providing notice to the general public, this will be the second reading.
Motion's approved.
Second, we have a roll call vote.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimminger?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, bill number 4200 now becomes ordinance 4133.
Thank you very much. Takes us to new business, bill number 4201, uh, an ordinance amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, chapter, y'all have that?
I don't have that.
I don't have that.
He amended agenda.
Amended, revised agenda.
That was attached to your revised agenda.
That's why we're...
Oh, there we go. Yeah, they're stapled together.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is referring to our, our burning policy, right?
Correct. So, the mayor asked me about the process for open burning, and I said, in the past, it's just that Alderman has made a motion, and people agreed to have open burning for some specified period, but his asking me caused me to give more serious consideration to that process, this is kind of the way we always did it, so, uh, so we asked Mark's opinion, and he said, yeah, that's really not the way to do it. Uh, so, uh, I mean, there's kind of a, a, an old saying in municipal government, and that is, that the legislative body speaks through its resolutions and ordinances, so that's, and, and that was not being done by resolution or ordinance. So, we drafted some language, Mark amended the language, and this proposal allows the board to establish twice a year, an open burning period that's designated by the board at the time you choose to, to do it, in April and...
March and...
March and November.
March and November. Um, so we got a spring cleanup and a fall cleanup. Other than that, there was no authority in the ordinance to suspend the permit process for burning, so that's what we're doing, is we're creating that suspension option for those specified periods of time. Anywhere?
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest that you go ahead and have it read twice tonight and pass it, and then, and then designate some period of time, because the ordinance that you'd be amending would allow you to...
Do it twice.
To, to permit it without getting a temporary permit for some specified period of time. So you wanna do two readings, pass it, and then pass, you can pass a resolution at that point, just vote to approve some period of time where they don't have to get a permit, because right now, you have to get a permit.
Oh, I mean, I, the only problem I have with this is, um, not including Kenny in on this, I mean, if, if the conditions aren't favorable for that...
Well, I, I think...
I think he should have said...
That consultation would occur before establishing it, and, and, because you don't have to do it, and so should we have dry conditions or some other mitigating factor that would cause you to not want to do it, you just don't do it.
But does he still have authority, like, let's say we have it, and it's fine when we put it, or whenever we say it, but does he have the authority to come in and say, okay, I'm, I'm gonna say no, you know?
Well...
Because I think he should have that discretion as fire chief.
I think he could advise, advise the board not to do it, you would have to respect his recommendation.
We just, we just went through that, we just had a, a dry spell where the county and we, there's no, and I'm sure that will happen again, but if we wait for him, we, you, you'll, you'll have the opportunity for people to clean up their yards and, and burn leaves, and, yes, you'll have to use a little bit of common sense, you know, but if we get to where it's real dry, I'm sure that, uh, the county's gonna say, well, we're not gonna burn right now.
So then what would you do, have a public announcement that...
Yeah, we put...
Pretty much what they did.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking.
It gets reported in the paper and...
Right, I could probably even say the same thing.
Yeah.
If it's where the city goes, you could say, if you felt it was too dry, or the city did, you could come out with the same proclamation.
You're not obligated to do it, for whatever reason.
And the ordinance as it exists now, it doesn't, it doesn't have, um, anything in there, this is fire chief has any role in approving it or not, so it's really not changing that, but there's, the way, the way I had the amendments are, in, I think the original version that you presented to me, there's still several regulations of the burning that still apply, it's just so you don't have to get a permit. So the, the only downside to it is, nobody will know where all this burning is happening, when it happens. Right now, they have to get a permit, so that way we know, hey, they're, they're gonna have this, they're gonna be burned here at this location, but they still have to have, you know, a six-foot, six-foot by six-foot area, attended by a dole with, uh, the connected water hose and rain tip aside, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, all those things still apply, the only thing you're changing, if you, only thing you're changing now is giving you the option to suspend it properly by ordinance, and then also, uh, gives you that, you know, uh, gives the people the option to, to do this if you suspend it, so you don't have to suspend it like Mr. Tony said, if you don't want to, and you certainly, if it's, it's in the middle of drought, you're not gonna wanna suspend it, you know.
Maybe, you had the reading, right? I mean, the...
We're gonna, we're gonna start, start it now, so, oh, we're gonna have the first reading right now, this is bill number 4201, we have, we do, okay, an ordinance amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 230, Solid Waste, Article 1, General Section 230.030, prohibited practices set forth below.
Motion's approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll have to get a motion.
Motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance amending the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances, Chapter 230, Solid Waste, Article 1, General Section 230.030, prohibiting practices that's set forth below, we have a roll call vote.
Motion is approved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright.
Alderman Grimminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent, bill number 4201 now becomes ordinance 4134.
I'd like to make a motion for open burning from today through the December 31st.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any other communication, communication or other business?
Motion's approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Where'd John go?
I'm right here.
Hold there. Are you okay over there?
Yeah, I just farmed him, mind, mind.
Alright, well, this is, uh...
Hang on.
Before we get started.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Mario.
Oh, there's Mario.
There he is. Oh, wow.
So, we have our new, uh, K9 partner, Mario, come on in. This is Officer Gucianelli in Landlord, uh, they just got back from their training in, uh, Michigan, and, uh, everything is all good, he's certified and, and ready to go.
Yeah, he's a fine weapon handler.
Yep.
What breed is that?
He's a Doug Shepherd.
Okay.
He was openly imported...
We gotta get his picture for the paper.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Smiling. Look at that. He is too, look at him. Yeah, smiling. Cool.
And I understand he's already been to work?
Yes, he's, uh, we've had, uh, three call-outs, so one was in Sunset Hills, looked for a missing person, the missing person was found later, but he was nowhere in the area which we looked, and it was, it was really old, it was, uh, by the time they had calls, and I had got there, it was over four hours old, so he was found the next day, like several miles up the road, so, in the area he was at, you know, we, we had searched the area that I... He's, uh, certainly got a, uh, temperament that, that we appreciate, he's, he's very friendly, uh, good with people, good with kids, and, so it'll be a good, uh, a good PR, uh, opportunity for us also, so, we're happy to have him. He's a good dog. He's, uh, sixteen months old.
Wow.
So he's pretty young still.
What kind of vest is that?
This is a, we have, it's a color patrol vest, it's just something that we wear, like, if we hop out of the car and something in progress, and we, you know, get there in a hurry, I can grab ahold of him by that, lift him over four fences if I need to.
Oh, right.
If I don't have time, like, put a tracking harness on, I can, I can hook it to here, I can take the reason to have, and throw it on, you know, real quickly, you know.
So that's his uniform?
Yep, that's his. So now, we'll have a ballistic vest for him shortly.
Yeah. Good deal.
He's a good dog.
Happy to have him.
So thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, congratulations.
Yeah.
Stay out there, Eric, we're gonna do you first.
Alright. Okay, Eric.
How are you?
We're well, how are you?
Thank you for having me this evening. Um, I did not want to present this prior to now and muddy up any of the budget issues, uh, now, if the budget has been approved, uh, we're going to make a proposal for a remodel at the police department. Um, we have had suggestions from, from some people and some of the aldermen to, to look at, uh, the cost of, uh, new builds, which I, I don't know is gonna be cost effective for us, um, so, this proposal will just include a remodel of, of the existing footprint, we won't be changing much of the exterior of the building, other than adding awnings and, uh, creating an entrance into here, directly into here from the parking lot, uh, and then eliminating the hallway that's, that's out there, just utilizing that space a little, a little more efficiently, I think. Um, so we've gotten some, some estimates, obviously, we would, we would need to put everything out for bid, but we didn't wanna do that without having some kind of, uh, temperature from the, from the board or, or, uh, level of, of support or non-support, so, right now, just with, with Martin's, uh, expertise, uh, indicating the, the labor from his experience, pretty well doubling the material costs, is that correct? It won't, it won't be too low if you do that. Okay, we, we would be around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the remodel, um, so we would ask that you would consider the capital improvement, uh, or the, the, uh, capital improvement fund for that, if, if that's appropriate, um, and then that would allow us, I have taped our, our plans up here for you guys, I apologize, I don't have an individual copy or a scanned copy, that was my intent, but I don't have a scanner this big, so, uh, we did get some help with, with the drawing from, from Gary, he helped us, uh, with all the measurements and, and drawing and, and the plans here, but this is not, again, not changing any of the structure or, or bones of the building, so, so to speak, but would clean up a lot of the electric, electrical issues that we have in the ceilings, um, and also just, just to improve the aesthetics and also the overall function of our building, uh, giving us some things that we don't have now, including an interview room, um, adding an office for the, for the additional officer that you guys provided us in the, in the budget, which we again appreciate, and then, uh, and then would create a, uh, indoor access to our basement, which we don't have now, every access to the basement now is, is an exterior entrance, um, so, I think that this would work well for, for what we have without expanding or, or using, uh, tremendous, tremendous amount of, of citizen dollars or, or any of our budgets, so, um... So what happened between our last meeting and today, kicked it up forty thousand? Uh, the architect and, and I didn't have the, the labor in there when I talked to you, and, and we, we had discussed that as far as the, the, uh, prevailing wage and all of that, so, um, before that, we were still at the seventy-five thousand dollars or so, um, but I did include the architect's, uh, estimate of this, which was the ten percent of the, of the overall cost, which was ninety-five.
And if I understand correctly, a good portion of this, we're pretty much, we have to do something because of the way the laws have changed, the separation.
And then, yes, that is correct, that's, that's what sparked a lot of this, and, and, with our, with our current situation with Lisa being our court clerk and police clerk, um, we are required to separate those two positions, she needs to be completely separate from the police department, um, and looking at, at the options that we had, you know, we, we found space that we thought would be suitable near the courtroom, which we thought was, was important. There are some other functions that happen in this room now through the, through the week, uh, or a couple times a week, there's meetings in here that are scheduled frequently, and then, uh, MODOT, or not MODOT, but, uh, the seat bed people, the, the highway patrol, driver exam people are, are operating out of this room now, uh, so we created somewhat of a lobby area back there where, where people could still come in utilizing the same entrance into here, uh, but utilize the lobby there, so they would have some privacy, and she can deal with the things that she needs to deal with, you know, without being in the public eye, uh, but then still have access to City Hall if she needs that, and, and this would still create an opportunity for people to utilize the restrooms that are in this hallway, uh, but eliminate the need for too much foot traffic in what could be considered secure areas.
So, question would be, if, if we were to do this, what do you do while that's being done?
We have, we have some options that we've looked at, uh, there's some office space that's available through here, our, uh, record management system is, is kind of a posted service now, so, it's, we're not necessarily tied to a server system like we were before, uh, so we would be able to use, move that service, um, and then, uh, so that, that's what we would need to do, I have not researched too much of that, because if you just tell me no tonight...
Right, yeah.
Then I'm not, not committed to anything.
And there may be a way to even partially occupy and, while they do pieces on it too, which is gonna be real tricky.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, we have some, some evidence issues and things that we would need to consider as far as the, the security of, of that storage, so, uh, those are concerns that we have solutions for.
I got a question, you said something about a lobby, you're not, this space is not gonna shrink at all, is it?
Just the length of, of a lobby right there, about where, where Gary and Lieutenant Gruber are setting.
Because I've seen this building, this room full, you can't, yeah, we don't wanna, uh, on court night, this place, pack.
And that, and that was certainly a consideration, um, so, in this proposal, it does, it does propose moving five feet.
Five feet of this room.
Five feet.
Pretty much of that, for that, for that...
Right, where the...
Yeah, right, right, where that doorway is.
You look to pass that doorway.
Yeah, that way.
So, in, in these estimates costs, it's, it's basically the, the materials, the flooring, the drywall, uh, obviously, stud walls, uh, and, and, uh, big... the drywall, uh, obviously stud walls, uh, and, and, uh, big lighting and, and electrical and, uh, HVAC. Actually, we still have base floor heat in here that would replace that and, and force air and heat in, in the, uh, police department.
And that will include, we talked about this out here, putting that...
Correct. It will include the lobby that's, that's, uh, proposed for out there, closing off that a little bit and making more of a...
For some, for security, for our employees.
Security place, yes.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate any support. I realize that this isn't, uh, on some of the radars, but just improving the, the usability and the aesthetics of the place. I think we'll just continue to, to help with our ability to recruit officers and, and just the professionalism of the city and the department.
And the last time it was done was...
I don't know that it's ever been done.
Nineteen sixties, probably?
That's Michael's...
Done by the flooring that's under now?
I think we moved in in the seventies. When they moved off of Jefferson Street, I think it was in the seventies, and we've been in here since then and really haven't... We, we've painted. We've done what we can do. We've added, uh, you know, the, the functionality that we can to, to make it usable. And it is usable, but it is outdated. And, uh, and like I said, I believe Alderman, Donovan saw some things in the attic that he thought were, were safety concerns that probably needed to be addressed with the...
Forty square feet is that?
I don't have that with me right now, but that would be... Sixteen hundred-ish. Well, at, at some point, we're gonna decide upon the disposition of the capital improvement funds, but, and this is competing for those funds as are roads and whatever else.
I was just gonna make the comment that we probably maybe ought to listen to the rest of the meeting and, and then, as a board, decide really what your priorities are.
So, you said sixteen hundred square feet?
I believe so.
So, if we go, we can ballpark it, too, just figuring the square footage times...
Hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty.
With, with the labor cost and the, uh...
So, are there some major cost factors other than walls and paint?
Well, in the supplies, the, the paints and the, the drywall and fixtures, I would say twenty-six thousand, uh, for the, the electrical, lighting and the new, uh, updated electrical was twenty-one thousand. HVAC was thirteen, and some change. Flooring is nine and some change. Like I said, the architect cost was eighty-five hundred. Uh, the concrete for the ramp and stairs were eight thousand.
So, that's like seventy-five dollars a square foot?
Well, my guess was gonna be about eighty.
Yeah.
I mean, for that type of structure, wouldn't you think about eighty bucks a foot?
Well, it's about half a new construction, isn't it?
Right.
Right now, they're talking a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
Right. Residential would be up over a hundred, but just for, yeah.
So, if you're doing a remodel for half?
And building, I mean, we looked at, at the possibility, or at least the comparison of, of building new. The lot that we looked at was close to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars just for the lot. So, um, I mean, obviously, there's probably other lots and, and, um, I won't assert that that's what's more beneficial to the city, but I, I think that a remodel would certainly be more efficient for earnings.
All right.
So, if they decide we need these roads and this money and that money, and they said, no, hundred twenty, we could come up with money? Is there something you could do for something less than a hundred and twenty thousand?
I mean, I would imagine that we can, we can look at, at things. There's no one expense that I think that, that you could cut and make any...
Is there a way of phasing it?
Potentially.
Phasing it, I just think you turn into patchwork.
That'd cost you more doing that, I would think. And once you open things up and you start, where do you stop with certain aspects of it?
And, and, yeah, I mean, I hope that we've demonstrated through our, through our administration that we're reasonable and, and we'll continue to be reasonable and, and we understand the needs of the city. Again, we're just looking at ways of competing and, and continuing to provide professional service.
I mean, it's long overdue, but...
We've had somebody out recently do evaluate the roof. It seems to be in, in good working order and, and no major structural issue there. So, I mean, that won't be an expense that we would be incurring at this time, with the exception of this building, I think we need to, to fix some of the...
Do you have suspended ceiling back there now? I don't remember. Is it like this?
Drop ceiling now, yes.
Okay. You're figuring going back with...
This, this would back figure, uh, drywall ceiling or sheet dropped ceiling and, and recessed lighting.
That would be one area if you had to cost cut. You know, I mean, obviously, you'd rather have a sealed, you know, that is, uh, one area you could probably shave a little cost off if you had to, you know?
Where's the council chambers at on there? I can't picture it.
The council chambers, it's here.
Oh, it's not even on that?
So, this is, this is the hallway...
Okay.
Coming in here. So, we would keep the hallway, like I said, keep the, keep the restrooms. We would move one of the restrooms down.
I was teasing him earlier. I said it needed a you are here. You need a you are here thing, because I couldn't figure it out either.
Dry erase marker. So, yeah, this is, this is City Hall and, and the council chambers.
What's your, what's the consideration out in the front there? You were talking about...
Building, building a, somewhat of a lobby around that door and, and having more of a partitioned area for people to come in and...
So, would it be like a, like a counter, maybe with some glass, where the people stop there?
Yeah, probably a framed stud wall with, with windows for customer service.
Eleven years ago, we got a report from the ISO and, and that one of the things that they were, and, and our, it was very public risk, was that the areas where money is being infiltrated are not secure. Concern back then. We talked about alarm systems and arming the personnel. But it's, it's just a relatively minor expense.
I, I think it's something you need to look into, because the world is getting crazier by the day, by the minute. You know, I, I don't have any quarrel with that.
It's a minor expense in consideration for the whole...
Yeah. That out there in the front, that's a must. That should already be done. It should've been done a long time ago. Should've been, but it's not, so...
Thank you for your considerations. If you have any questions, so, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Some of the citizens who are here are hanging over because, uh, they're interested in the, uh, property maintenance discussion, so we're gonna be on to that so they don't have to sit through the rest of it. They don't want to. At our last meeting, I distributed to you, uh, excerpts from the city code regarding property maintenance. The city has the authority to require people to maintain their property up to a certain standard, uh, which includes things like painting, exposed building materials that aren't currently painted or the paint is peeling, and fixing siding and gutters and the, the list of things that, um... And the practice in the past has been to use that code, and we have used it, uh, in the occupancy process, more particularly when rental property has a change in occupancy. There had been times that, that we found sufficient deficiencies in the structures that we asked the tenant, the landlord, to fix the exterior before we would issue the, the new occupancy permit. But we haven't, to my knowledge, never have, uh, sought out homes in the community that kind of fall below the property maintenance code standard and ask the property owners, whether it's owner occupied or, or rental property, to, to remedy the deficiencies. The mayor asked me, because he's, it's a concern of his, uh, what we could do, and, and, and it's on the books. I mean, we have the ability to act. We have many things that the code and the state statutes allow us to do, and it's always kind of a question of, you know, how much government do you want? And, uh, in this case, the practice had not been to pursue with vigor the, uh, the, any but the most obvious properties. My concerns are not that we, we're capable of doing it, willing to do whatever it is you, you, you ask us to do, but you're gonna run into at least two problems that I can easily anticipate. One is people saying, I just don't have the money. I mean, I'd love to paint my house, but I don't, I don't have the resources. But in my means, do what you want me to do. The other is, um, kind of deciding what the threshold is. How much peeling paint is too much peeling paint? I think I told you this. I own a, a piece of property that my son's rent, rented from me up in Richmond Heights, and there was a time when he was not there and the front porch was peeling. And I got a citation from Richmond Heights that my front porch was peeling. Is, is, is that the level at which we want to operate? So, we took some pictures of some properties around town that have problems. There are others. I'm not calling these out. I'm not even saying these are ones we'll pursue, but it's an example that there are issues. We didn't take a picture of the Gag property, because you certainly know about that one. But it's...
The pictures are all the same, yeah, I mean...
Yeah, it's all the same. I, I, I said to the mayor, and, and I will say tonight, that, uh, before we start down this road, we need to have a consensus. We need to agree, and we need to have established certain guidelines that we will follow, but ultimately, it's up that you will support as we do it, because the worst thing that could be happening is for us to go out and start from down the road and then somebody say, you know, I wish you'd not do Aunt Mary's house. That kind of consistent enforcement over, you know, the, the entire community is, is gonna be necessary.
I, I don't know how you instill in people pride in their homes. Is it gonna be a fine that's gonna instill pride in it?
It'll be a citation. It'll be a violation of the city's building code. They'll either mitigate the violation or they'll come before the municipal court.
I don't think we can instill pride in, in, in ownership with someone, but I think we can, we can, uh, enforce the code to make them take care of it, whether they're proud of it or not. I don't really care, as long as they're taking care of it.
I didn't mean, I, I just meant, how do you get people to take care of something?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, John, and, and I'm the last guy that wants to see more government intrusion into anybody's lives, but I, I really believe that we've gotta come up with some sort of minimum standards for what... We, we, you know, I, because I, having lived in, in another part of town where this was a bad, an issue, I longed for something to be done about that. And in the end, it, if, if the properties are maintained, it helps everybody. I realize it could be a financial hardship to some people, but in the long run, the property's worth more, and it makes everybody's property around it worth more. It makes people want to live there. It, it, there's no negative to it as far as I'm concerned. I think the only negative you're gonna have, you are gonna have people that can't afford it. And I, I respect that. But, but there is a way we can do this to help somebody. There's, we're gonna be painting a house on Eighth and Market with we, a group. There's a house. We've got the paint at cost. There, there's somebody gotta pay to have the house painted. The man, we went to the man. We can't afford it. We know that. We, we talked to him. We visit with him, and it's, and there's people like that. But there are different places, and, and one example, and it's in I S O R, that you all drive by every day. It's over at the Point. That little block building, you got paint peeling, and you come right down Main Street, and nobody says a word about it. Now, I don't think that that building, what it would cost to paint that building and why it's not been painted, I don't know.
I don't know either.
But that, now, that's, that's a glaring example right there.
At a major intersection.
At a major intersection.
The first thing you see when you come into town.
And I've had more than one person...
Right.
Ask me about it. What can you do about it?
Right.
So, and then there's houses that you come down Market and any street, paint peeling and falling off of them. Some of them are rentals, some of them are homes that people privately own, but if we don't hold anybody accountable, guess what? And if I'm living next to that property, I'm not very happy about that. Case in point with Sam and what he's living next to and had to live, and that is a, a crying shame that we have somebody in the community that's not in the community, that's got a gun to our heads, and we can't do anything about it.
It is the property maintenance code that she's being cited for violating. And so, that's what we're talking about here.
Right.
That's, that's the code.
Just let me just say this, if I, if I may. Come up to the microphone, please, Sam. I think there's a big difference semantically and otherwise wise of a person that lives in this, lives in this community who can't afford to paint their house and says to us, I, I really just can't afford it. That's different than someone that owns property in this town and then doesn't live here and doesn't care about it. There's a, there's a, there's a distinct difference there. I have a little more sympathy for the person, uh, that has that and lives here and can't afford it. Also, you have to understand that we, you're gonna have to deal with some of these issues related to cost, related to what the commission says that it must be cedar siding and not, you know, fake siding or composite board and not... You're gonna have to work with those people to come up with some different answers, too. I mean, it can't just be you deciding, in my opinion, you deciding, we're gonna find this person or not. A lot of the cost involved in doing this stuff, if, if you, if you allowed somebody to use, uh, cement board or whatever, if something different that would last and last, they wouldn't have this cost over time. Now, there is an, there is an argument for historical preservation, and I, I live, although my house is not, it's considered historical. It's not the Bolduc or the other houses like that, and I'm gonna try to maintain it to the, what it is. But you, you're gonna have to work with that other group to, and, and consider what they say and work together, rather than always you guys passing a rule and say, you know, you can do this, and they say, no, you can't do this. You're gonna have to work together.
I think we've already started doing that. I, I think we've made great strides with the Heritage Committee. Used to be that this board would have to overrule them. We haven't seen that at all in quite some time. They've come up with some good guidelines. Carla's helped them with that, and I've seen a lot of projects get done that they're done well, and, and they're, they're working with people, and they're, they're well on their way. I don't see where that's gonna be a problem. Paint is cheap.
Yeah.
In the scheme of things, it's, it's one of the cheapest things you'll, you could do.
My concern with that house is the way it's, what it's like inside.
Right.
And what, what dangers does that house in terms of fire, flood, rodents, everything else have to the property around it? Termites. So, it's not just the way it looks outside. It's that property. And if, if it was denied an occupancy permit, that tells me something. That would tell me something as an alderman group. And that may be the judgment that you make for the decisions on.
Well, I, it's been years since we've been in that, in that...
Well, they, last year, they, they said it was denied last year.
Yeah.
That's just in the last year. And they, and I was talking to, to somebody, uh, and he, he said that it was a terrible...
Our right of entry and, and, and ability to get them to do things inside the house are limited to permission to occupy.
True. In that case, we're talking about, and we're, and we sidetracked a little bit. I wanna get back, that property is, is a set of its own problems, but we're talking about people that are here that have, that have, and I, and I know it, and I, and we're gonna do something. We gotta do something.
I mean, I think you, I, I, I'm, I like to be empathetic to people, but there does have to be, and it may start out with a simple warning, right, a citation.
It'll always start out with, uh, an attempt to resolve the problem without citing somebody.
Right.
And we, we work with people sometimes too long.
And that's the other issue, yes. You have to move, you have to move forward.
Compliance is our goal, not enforcement. And, but at some point, you... And, but at some point, you...
But I think there's, I just wanted to state, there's a difference for some, working with somebody that can't afford it and lives here and takes pride in the community because they live here and they love it, and they love the people in this community, that's different than somebody that just says, "Well, I'm not gonna be here."
And doesn't care.
Doesn't care.
Right.
Well, again, my concern is that we agree on the, on kind of the level. I mean, I can't make somebody re-sign their house. I can make them fix the siding.
And I think if...
So, how would you do it on, on, as a, for instance, peeling paint on a side of house? Would you go by a percentage, if a certain percentage of it is? I, I'm asking.
I, I, absent, you're establishing those standards.
Okay.
It's all or nothing for us.
Well, what have you, Martin, what have you, you seen in your experience with other municipalities? How do they approach it?
If you have exposed wood that needs to be painted, or badly.
That's pretty much it.
Okay.
If you're in the city of St. Louis and you have peeling paint, they come by and say, "Here's, you've got this much time to get it taken care of," and that's it.
Okay.
That's how they do it in all the other municipalities, uh...
Your gutters aren't functioning, you need to fix them.
Right.
Right.
Because that causes your neighbors some...
Exactly.
You know? Rick, were you, you had something to say, I'm sorry, where you got?
I was just thinking, maybe if we, if we could establish some kind of levels. But then Martin said, "If the paint's peeling, it needs to be..."
Well, I don't think you can leave it up to the building staff to have a moving target. If you're gonna do something less than everything, then we need to agree what that is, and then that'll be the guideline.
I think as we get notified or get complaints, I mean, some of them are obvious.
Do you want the board to, to consider action for the houses before we take action? We don't have to do this, I mean, we could say, "We're bringing you this house."
No.
Okay.
That's, that's, no, that's, that, no. I don't think this board should micromanage.
No.
That's your problem.
Nah, I was trying to make it your problem.
Well, eventually, it's gonna be your problem, it's not gonna, somebody's gonna come to Holland, or they're gonna come to me.
If it goes that far.
You know, they're, it's gonna happen. It's, are they, they're gonna just say, "You know what?" I talked to a man right here on, on Market, he says, "You know what? I just need a kick in the butt, I know I gotta do some work to my house." And he's willing to, and he's gonna start doing it, you know? And I think as we do some stuff, I think people, I think it'll correct itself, I really do, right? And there, yeah, will there be people that can't afford it? Yeah, but we, I think we can be, we can still be, we can work with people, you know? We, we know, you know, we're coming into winter, you know, we can work with people. Now, can we afford to paint everybody's house and say, "I, I can't do that."
I'm not painting anybody's.
That's right, and I'm not asking you.
It's the we, there's the we out there or something.
Well, there's volunteers, there's people that'll do it. It's a great opportunity. It's, it's a great, there's community service and community projects that you can do, and it, it builds community. And I think we'll, we'll do that. And plus, guys, we're, we're, we're on the cusp of having a national park. And I know you might not wanna hear that, but it's, it's getting close. And, and we gotta be ready for it, and this community needs to be ready for it. We, you know, we've got a great little town, let's keep it that way.
And it's even better if it's maintained.
Right. It's better for everybody.
Yeah, that's what I said, it, there's, there's no downside to it, in my opinion.
Although, we did have a, a, a citizen who's been spending considerable amount of time in California, comes home from time to time, and he commented to the mayor, they thought the town was looking pretty good. And that's, you know, but there's, there's issues.
Sure.
There's always gonna be issues.
Right, yeah.
Well, I just, I, I'm willing to, to go down this path, I know how to do code enforcement.
I support, I support code enforcement. I don't know, again, the, the thing is the levels, uh, you know, do you look at this house on Third Street and say, you know, "Well, it looks like, you know, eighty percent of the house is okay, twenty percent of it needs to be repaid." I don't know how you do it.
Are you looking at, which house is that?
The bottom left.
I don't have a picture of it.
The house on Third, one for yourself.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, are you, are you, you're talking about, "Well, we need to figure out..." It's kinda like the, the old, uh, the definition of something, you know? I don't, I don't know how to define it, but I know it when I see it.
Right.
You know, it's, it's that kind of thing, so... I mean, if you're looking for a mathematical formula as to how much of the house looks like it needs to be repaired before we say, "Do it," then paint it, then...
That's what I posed earlier, but really, your response, I thought was good. You said, "If the paint's peeling, it needs to be fixed." If it's just a few spots, there's no reason they can't scrape those and just feather in some paint.
Easy fix.
And really, that's a good idea, 'cause it keeps the rest of it from turning loose.
Well, that's, that one here, you look at the sightings falling off of it and everything else, that is, it's going, it's going. And that should be, that's, that's a no brainer to me.
That's demolition by neglect, because...
That, that should be on the list to do.
Yeah, because then what happens is the wood rots, and then you just continue to have more problems, so...
One of these is, um, rental, one of these is vacant, and the other two are owner occupied.
Right.
I would think the one...
And I think that's kind of the proportion of what we're seeing.
I would think the one on top right is probably ready for demolition.
Yeah.
It's structurally, I, I can't, I, I, when I first saw it, I thought the same thing.
That's my neighborhood.
And we got in it, and it, it's not that bad.
Huh?
It, it, it's structurally not, not bad.
What?
Yeah, they did some work, they, they've done some work.
But look around the, the, what you call that, sill?
Sill?
Yeah. Look at that, it's all rotted out.
The siding is.
The siding is.
That place has been rotted for a long time.
I remember they had the foundation...
Somebody, they, they live in California or somewhere, they're out, out of town, inherited the property, and at, at least they're keeping the grass cut. When I first got here, that, we couldn't get the grass cut.
What, this is part of the conduit.
What's going on with the old creamery down there on Third Street?
Um, they're gonna put a roof on it.
Oh, did it change hands, or?
Yeah, I think so. They changed it for...
'Cause I saw the other day, I went up there, I saw it's gutted.
Yeah.
Okay. Good, so somebody's gonna fix it.
I don't know what their intended use is, but...
Doesn't matter, as long as they clean it up.
Oh, blues old, whatever.
Let's get back to the, let's get back to the issue, we'll be here all night.
So, if, if, um, the, whoever it is, is Carla that, and her staff?
Carla and Bob.
That would go out and look and say, "Okay, well, that house has peeling paint, we need to contact them."
Go street by street and just start picking the houses out.
Oh, man.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna be as bad as you think, Rick. I, it's not a lot of properties. I, we picked out four of them here, and I don't think it's a lot.
And it's just, and I'm not talking, this one doesn't have to be, this one's on your top left, it's the, the carnage work and the fascia board is peeling off and falling, there's wood exposed. And that's not an expensive, I don't see where it's an expensive fix. But if you let it go, it's just gonna be...
It's only gonna get worse.
That's right, that's cat a corner to tenants' property, you know? And they, here they got, in the academy, and they spend thousands of dollars to, to, to improve, and then you're sitting there with that, that's, I'm sorry, but that's unacceptable.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands.
Hundreds of dollars.
All right, let's, what, so where do you wanna, sure, where do you...
Absent any, any restrictions by the board, we're going to do what I said.
Yeah.
If you've got exposed wood, you've got paint, if you've got a failing gutter, you gotta fix it. If, you know, whatever, if your handrail's, you know, falling off, you gotta put it back up.
I've had more than one person come to me recently asking that we be more stringent in our code enforcement in this regard, so... I'm all for it.
And I, I, I shouldn't say this, but I don't think that, that the board has always had that, this political will, the will to, to do it. So, that's why I'm asking, and you do seem to have it. So, so, so here we go.
There we go. All right.
I'll start riding around tomorrow with the house.
Yeah, if in your ward, or you're, you, you, tell us where it is.
Okay, I wanna talk about Jefferson Street.
Uh, Bill.
I think that, um, that, that area, Jefferson Street, that first block, um, off of Main, is narrow. I think if, if you gotta get a fire truck or, uh, an ambulance or something through there, you're gonna have a hard time. Um, you know, that's, that's right around the corner from where I live, so I, I walk by that often. And, uh, it, it's, I think it's, it's dangerous. Um, and there's, there's vehicles there that I believe are, are expired licensed or not licensed and shouldn't, shouldn't be there anyway.
If there are, I mean, we, it's been a problem, a persistent problem.
So, yeah, I, I, I think that making the, as I'm thinking about it here, what's the north side of the street, in front of the apartment building, a no parking zone, I think is gonna clear up a lot of that problem. Especially considering the apartments have ample parking...
You wanna do the whole, the whole block?
The whole...
It's four hundred and thirty-eight something feet long.
Like Second to Main?
Yes, Second to Main on the north side of the street.
Okay.
I'll tell you, there's another spot, right here, that's a bottleneck on this street. When you got truck traffic through the day, you got parking, and I know there's some parking here, but we park on the side where the church is, but on this side of that street, it's, it's a problem when you come out of there. You got cars stacked up, these streets weren't built for the vehicles that we have now, they were...
Not the volume, for sure.
Not the vol, not only the volume, but the size of vehicles, and, and it's, it's a mess. And, and I know it's a hardship maybe for some people that live right here, but this spot from, from this merchant down to the corner on this side of the street, it should be, it should be no parking.
Hey, but, but boy, you got a couple businesses there, you got people that live there, where, where are they gonna? I mean, down here that we're talking about, there is at least alternative parking around the back.
I get that.
You take it off here, we'll, we'll...
I, I don't know, where'd they go?
They'd have to walk blocks.
Yeah, there is no parking.
I don't know where they would go.
Yeah.
All right, do you wanna do anything special, other than me write a, it's an ordinance change?
I would, I would sponsor that ordinance.
Okay, do you wanna, like, notify the property owners, we're gonna do it, before we do it?
I think you should.
Have them come to a meeting to discuss your intentions, rather than just do it and have them find out about it later?
I would inform them of what's gonna happen first. I don't know that, that, um, I don't know that we need to have a, a powwow about it, I mean, that...
Well, I'm gonna send them a notice and say on whatever date of our next meeting, the Board of Alderman is willing to consider this ordinance.
Right, and if, if they wanna come, if they wanna come to that meeting to discuss it, they, yeah.
And that's gonna be no parking at any time, correct?
Yes.
I think it needs to be.
Right, yeah, that's no parking.
Just ver, just verifying.
Yeah, I think so. I'm trying to think of the, the property there, so you have the, the house on the corner with the big fence, uh, the big chain link fence that goes around the whole, yeah.
Yeah, all those properties, apartments got parking in the back all over now.
So, the, the vehicles that are there right now are the, uh...
Homeowners on the other side of the street.
Yes, the people on the, the, the south side of the street.
And it was, for a long time, somebody that would park like a utility trailer with stuff on it, has that been...
It's been, it's been addressed by.
Good.
There's one sitting there with a car on it now, but it's hooked up to a truck. And then again, the truck in front of it, it's sitting there, it's got a flat tire. They're big, they're big trucks, and you got a truck and a trailer there now, and it's, it's, I took a picture tonight, it's, it's narrow, it's terrible.
It's horrible.
Okay.
All right.
And finally. You... I was talking to Alderman.
Donovan, I guess.
Alderman Donovan, now, you haven't seen this.
An extra one?
He couldn't, he, he couldn't be here tonight, so he came by and talked to me about these things, and he, we were talking, I, did everybody get a copy of the, what, the four million dollar bond issue would mean?
That was handed out at the last meeting with your...
The four million, okay.
There was an email, you sent an email with the four million.
Email, yeah.
We did a four million dollar bond i- i- issue on a nineteen year amortization. Somebody that has a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand dollar house would have about a seven dollar a month increase in their property tax bill, which would be, you know, eighty-four dollars, eighty-six dollars a year. So, we're talking about increasing the average house bill by eighty-five to a hundred dollars. And, and Alderman Donovan said, "Well, where did that, uh, four million come from?" Well, it, we know we can't afford to do everything. We looked at eight million, we looked at twenty million, we looked at, but four, you know, that, that dollar figure, if, if you're thinking about what's palatable, seemed to be kind of the driver. It's, you know, we can stay under a hundred dollars for the average homeowner, and, you know, maybe we have a chance of getting something done. We told them their tax bill was gonna go up by two hundred dollars, uh, they're paying a hundred and thirty-six dollars now. You know, that, that seems unreasonable.
What's that hundred thousand dollar person paying? Right now?
That's the hundred and thirty...
Hundred and thirty...
Nine dollars.
He's paying a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and we're gonna increase it by eighty-six dollars?
That would be, yeah.
So, we're gonna go up?
A lot.
But that's not his whole tax bill, 'cause he's got the county...
No, that's just the city portion.
Right, right. Yeah, I, it's...
That's for four million?
It's for four million on a nineteen year amortization.
And I know there's no definitive answer, but for four million dollars, what do you think we can get done?
Well, I, I, that's, that's the question.
Because you're gonna almost have to say...
We're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to make that decision.
You're gonna have to say, otherwise...
You know, it's been, I've had some discussion with elected officials about this, and, you know, I, it... Most people think Market, finishing Market Street is a problem. That would require milling out the asphalt that's there down to two and a half inches and coming in. And I can't tell you what that would cost, but here's what it has cost us, to do overlays and removal and replacement, and, um...
So, Market Street from where?
From where we finished to, to Fourth Street.
To here.
To here.
And then I think you'd have to Fourth Street from right here all the way to Riverview. I think you need to do that one.
But not, not remove and replace.
No, and I think North Main, same way, North Main, all the way out to, to the line out there. Those three streets, those are three big connectors. And then we get into, then we bust up the rest into the, into our, into the wards where, where we're gonna do it. And it's, and it's, you know, it's, it's tough. And, and listen to me, I don't, I'm part of this community, I don't like paying more, but, but it's, if we're ever gonna get a handle on streets, we, we, what are we gonna do? I, I mean, we can, we can do what we're doing now, you know, and hopefully we'll have, at the end of every year, a couple hundred thousand, a hundred and seventy-five to, to do some work. And we could, and we did some significant work this year, and it was, it was good, and we've got a lot of comments, compliments on it, but there's a lot of work to be done. You know, Gary supplied us with a list, and, uh, it's difficult. And, and like I say, it's a, it's a difficult pill to swallow, but...
But this would be something that would be on, conceivably, on the ballot, and then voters would decide...
Oh, absolutely.
Right, do they, do they wanna do this or not?
That's right.
Well, I mean...
So, if you say, if you say four million dollars, and he says, then you all agree, "Let's do these streets." Well, now I got something I can, I can get a figure on. And then I can say, "We need to do River View and this ward and something else in this ward," then I can, then I can, I can get a handle around it.
Well, it's, it's, it's a sizable jump if you go with it. Then again, the flip side is, I think all of us, everywhere we go, what, what do people ask, talk to you about? The streets. So, you know, I, I don't know.
I agree, it's something that needs to be addressed. I, I, I would like to see it addressed through the budget of current funds better than it has been. I, I, I feel like, um, and I, I, I'm just, I'm talking about myself as much as anybody, that I haven't dug into that budget well enough to see where we can squeeze out some extra money. I think the three most important things that, as, as a city, we can spend money on is fire protection, police protection, and infrastructure. And anything beyond that, to me, is secondary.
I don't think I could argue with you.
And I'm not sure that we're looking enough at what falls into that secondary category to see where we can free up some funds to better take care of infrastructure.
We could eliminate an entire department to make, have a hundred thousand more dollars. But we're not gonna...
Which, which would about double what we currently have.
I'm just saying, it's gonna take millions of dollars to do something meaningful. Everything else is just an incremental step.
Right.
And I don't know, I, I feel like, I feel like that, that, uh, what is, what's a sixty, sixty-two percent I feel like that, that, uh, what is, what's a sixty, sixty-two percent increase in taxes is gonna be a really tough sell.
I agree.
To people.
I don't.
That's gonna be.
That's gonna fly.
Even, even if you say, look, you're gonna get, you know, some street repairs like you've been wanting, I, I, I think that, that we haven't, to me, that's pushing it off onto the people when it, it should be our job to try to figure out a way to do it without it costing them more.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't agree with that statement.
Okay.
I mean, and that's okay, you know, but you, you know, you look and, and you're, you're businessmen here. Every year, if you're a businessman, I talked to Bob about this in my business, we, we raise our rates. We have to because it costs more to do business. The same way for a city. It, it, this city, we're, it costs more to run a city. Every year, we're, we're spending more money, you know?
What's, what's our, what's our, the city's tax rates now comparable to like municipalities? Are we on the low side? Are we well below the average? Are we average? Are we above the average?
I, I, that'd be easy to find out.
I would say we're well below the average.
Where are we in relation to, you know, Park Hills or, you know, something like that?
Or Perryville or whatever.
Yeah, Perryville's, yeah, some, I mean, some of those places are quite a bit bigger.
Bigger than us, yeah.
Than us.
But bigger doesn't necessarily mean bigger taxes.
No.
I mean, it shouldn't arguably go the other way.
Yeah.
True.
On a, on a hundred thousand dollars to a business, this increase would be, be even more because.
Cause you're at a higher rate.
Thirty-two percent versus nineteen percent. I, I think we're kinda in catch twenty-two. It, it doesn't make sense to do anything less than four million because of what it's gonna cost you to do it. Just to do it.
Yes.
But to do that, uh, it would be a shame if we couldn't just go out and get a tax increase and not have to go for a four million dollar bond issue. The only, the only other thing that you can wait for is two thousand and twenty-three.
Well, a, a four million dollar bond issue is a tax increase.
Well, right, but I mean, to go with.
So you have to get the tax.
Just to get a tax increase and it not be a sixty-two percent tax increase where you would be getting just a tax increase and have, wouldn't have to go through the legal part of the bond issue side of it.
Take a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And, you know, maybe you end up with a, you know, maybe you end up with a million dollars a year just on a ten, fifteen percent tax increase versus a sixty-two percent tax increase. If they just would pass a, a, you know, maybe a tax increase and not truly a bond issue.
I hate to be Negative Nancy here, but sixty-two percent is never going to pass.
No, I, I don't, I don't, so, I don't, I think, I agree with you. I don't think it's gonna fly.
It just won't.
Now, now, we can't do another transportation tax. We can't put a transportation tax on top of the transportation tax. So it'd have to be a property tax.
Can we change the transportation?
You'd have to, you'd have to dedicate it, but you know.
Can you change the transportation tax percentage? By vote?
By vote? They just changed the rules on what's called staffing taxes. So I'll have to, I'll have to look at that.
It was a half percent, wasn't it, transportation trust fund, remember? But you think it was?
How did you get that?
Voted people.
People, okay.
Two thousand and twenty-three, we should see about a quarter of a million dollars more when the certificates are paid off.
Yes.
That's five years away.
And we had, we can continue to do the couple hundred thousand dollars a year and then have.
That's, that's an option. There's no problem.
What, what does this cost to put it on the ballot?
Uh, we asked that question earlier. We don't.
I'm sorry.
Depends on what value you go on, but it's in the order of magnitude of five thousand or less.
Five thousand would probably be the special option if there's nothing else on the ballot.
The real cost of a bond issue is underwriter fees, bond council fees, special council, city council fees, um, you know, and it ends up in that. It, it depends on.
I'd like to see a tax increase, but I, I, I don't know what it would be, about sixty-seven percent for sure, sixty-two percent. Instead of always being.
But if you take it to the vote of people, you wanna have an election where there's gonna be a good turnout.
Right, right.
Maybe, maybe not.
That would probably be a motivator for people to vote.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Well, and again, the problem with the, with not doing a bond issue is if you do the bond issue, you say, here's what the money's gonna go for, and it can't go for anything else. With the property tax, you say, here's our plans for where the money's gonna go.
But it doesn't have to go there.
But it doesn't have to go there and the next council can change, can change the direction. I mean, you can do, a bond issue under a million dollars, it's only gonna make any sense, but you could do a two million dollar bond issue. I mean, that's, that's done.
You're gonna not achieve as much with.
Well, you're gonna do half the projects, but you're gonna, you know, you're gonna have a thirty percent increase instead of sixty percent.
Rather than a game, you know, we're.
Right. They moving forward. But if you could, if you could end up getting a tax increase, a bond issue's gonna be a one-time thing. If you could end up with a tax increase where you gained a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, you're gonna gain that every year.
As long as it stays, that's the problem is it's, if we can keep it doing, for roads, but you know, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's, you know.
Court's got a choice, right.
That's right, so that's a harder sell for people than if I know that here's where, and, and they have input on it and decide that, well, yeah, this is good for our community, you know, and then they, they're able to decide that, that I know this is gonna fix the roads in our community that we're not happy with, you know, so. And not, and.
And not that we have any beating at our door now, but you start raising taxes, it's gonna be harder to attract business. You know, I mean, our sales tax right now is what, third highest in the state?
Which is what scares me away from adding more taxes.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I know, I, and, and, and while our city tax rate may not be that high, you still pay the whole tax bill, which includes the county. And I just got my statement, you know. You know. It's a lot of money.
A lot of money.
You know, and I just don't know if you're gonna get people to go along with it.
Yeah.
To me, the plus side of the bond issue thing is, it, the funds would be dedicated. If you could get them to go along with it, I like the standpoint of, it's gonna do this and nothing else can come out of it. The negative side of it is, it's pretty steep and I don't, I, I don't know if, if you're gonna get people to go along with that.
Yes, sir. How, how much does the capital improvement replenish every year? Cause it's, it's a tax, isn't it?
It goes to pay off that.
A debt he's talking about.
That debt that's paid off in two thousand and twenty-three, it's about a quarter of a million dollars, right?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
And so if you can hold on for five years, you'll have another quarter billion dollars for capital improvements that you don't have now.
Right.
And it can only go to capital improvements, but not just roads, I guess.
Right. It's a tough one.
And, and I think we've got two choices here, guys. Either we continue doing what we're doing, limping around now and going through, or come up with some kind of tax increase, but you know, a smaller one, I think, or just continue like we're doing. It's an interesting other choice.
Come on, look at the time.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm yours.
I knew it, listen.
I'm yours until you tell me to go.
You know, and I know it's, it's a sticky issue and, and I know that, nobody, nobody wants more taxes. But you know what? We also, there's a, there's a lot, there's, there's some work to be done in this, in the infrastructure of this city. You know what? It might not affect me, but it, it'll affect, or you, it might affect your kids though down the line, you know? And we gotta make some tough, hard decisions and I know money's tight and yeah, let's look at the budget, but.
And you go, and the thing too is we have to educate the public on what we're gonna do with this money and what's going to happen to the city if we don't get the money. You know, like, put all your cards on the table. See, this, this is how.
Idea of it is, is, I brought, we brought it out, it was just, it's just a thought, you know, so I don't, you know, we can look at the budget, but looking at the, just a surface look at the budget, I don't see where you're gonna get a lot of money unless you cut services.
Well, and it, you know, maybe that's the, the, you know, new guy, mm, maybe I'm naive about the whole thing, but I don't feel like I've worked hard enough with that budget to, to see where I think there might be some money. And that's on me. I just haven't, I haven't, you know, gone through it as deeply as I feel like I need to.
Do that then, because you know what? Looking at the budget, but one thing I have done, I've looked and I've, I've looked and, and been involved in every piece of the pie that we call St. Genevieve. I've looked and lived for the last six months tourism, which nobody wants to hear about. I've lived and looked at what the police are doing and, and what City Hall's doing and the people we have there. You know what? I don't see a bunch of waste everywhere. I don't see any waste anywhere. I don't see it anywhere, not anywhere. So I think it's something we've gotta look at and I just, I just don't want it to, like I say, I don't. And it ultimately, it's up to the people, you know? But it's our responsibility to take care of what God has given us. You know, he's given us a position here in the city to take care of. And it's, and it's a group effort, you know, but, but you are right. It, it is our responsibility to look at everything and see what we can do, you know? In our streets, there's a lot of streets in disrepair.
I agree.
You know, your ward, your, your, you guys are all, in all of your wards, every one of your wards, even.
Right.
I talked to a lady that lives over on Walnut Street, you know, that's a pretty newer something, but it's, there's problems over there on some of those streets.
Walnut Street was just badly done.
Yeah, and I, and I, and a lot of this can be fixed. I talked to Murnee Bowman, of your streets, the, the main hub of your streets out in the middle, they're not gonna get any worse. You can fix, you look at Lynn Drive, I would have never, ever thought an overlay would have took care of that. But that, that street is nice. It's, it, and is it a permanent, it's, it's gonna, but that street, you'll get thirty to forty, maybe fifty years out of it, I believe you will.
But wasn't Walnut Street a chip and seal, didn't that what we tried?
Yeah, didn't we do the whole subdivision at one time?
No, I don't know if we did at all.
I think you did.
Yeah, it's been chipped.
I thought the whole subdivision was done.
You sure messed up that street somewhere along the way.
You know, it's, it's, chip and seal is a surface preservation measure.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't solve the underlying problem, but if you have a road that's in decent shape, you're gonna keep it in decent shape for a longer period of time if you can do a, a periodic.
On these four main streets, you can do that. You can, and you'll have to do some takeoff.
You can't build an asphalt overlay on Ottawa and expect it to be there for very long. But when you drive down that street, you can feel the pavement moving now.
Where are we with that? What are we doing on that?
Gary's doing.
He's doing nothing with it. Oh. People are living where they are.
I know, but I thought it was on the schedule.
We did some asin' on it.
Okay, that's it.
You know, some bands, but.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's just different, different things to think about. I just wanted to put it out there. It was something I thought about and I'm glad that I brought it up.
We're not gonna do the bond issue. Now, we have some money we can plan to spend, to, to spend in spring out of the capital fund to do roads earlier in the year rather than waiting to see what our cash position is. Uh, how do you wanna go about establishing those properties? How much do you, how much we have? You know, I had this figure in my head.
One point six, I thought you said was that.
No, but about eight hundred.
Oh, yeah.
Sixty-two thousand.
That's what we have to work with in Springfield. Do we hit the one that needs it worse or do we pick, you know?
Well, I mean, before we spend all that, I'd like to get this.
Back to the first thing, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we got here, we got, you know, somebody spent here. Well, I think you, it's a capital improvement on our building.
Just right where the device, put up a new building.
No, you can't, you can't drink if I put. That'd be a nice thought.
Drink, but put a hundred and forty thousand in there, you would.
Well.
Hundred and twenty.
I think that's something we look at, get serious about too, doing, and using that, some of that capital funds to do that, you know?
I shoot me for saying this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I, I think if you look at the priorities, I think maybe we, I think maybe we, everybody realizes, I think streets are probably a top priority. Randy, you said one of the things that, or maybe you did, John, as far as fire, police and streets right now, the rest of the infrastructure seems like it's all heading in the right direction, but I think if you look what we did, in my opinion anyway, for the police department this year, I think, I don't know, just in my opinion, I think the priority are these streets. I think you spent, as far as the budget goes, in my opinion anyway, what we spent on the police department this year in relationship to other things, spent a lot.
We spent a lot with the fire department too this year.
Yes, we did. Well, we sure did, but that was.
That's a priority.
That was.
Plus we got a new building and, I mean, we haven't done nothing to City Hall, not, not just the police department, our entire City Hall needs, needs work. And if it starts back there, it starts back there, but this building's an eyesore. I mean, the outside is horrible looking. It, it, the brick isn't even tan anymore. It's got brown stuff go, you know, all over it. Uh, I mean, we, it's just an eyesore. We're talking about property upkeep for personal residences and stuff and, you know, this building itself looks.
Well, maybe we could strike a happy medium somewhere. And a certain percentage of this almost has to be done, doesn't it? Because we have to do the separation. We're obligated to do that. Maybe we can review it and figure out a way to achieve that and maybe do some of it. And I, I, I feel that this area up in front is definitely a priority. I, I think that for safety concerns for the employees here, I think that's something that really ought to be done. I don't know.
I agree with you, Randy.
The, the trouble is, we need to do all of it.
Yeah.
But like any entity or any person, you only have a finite amount of resources. Well, and then two, you don't wanna bankrupt that account. Well, yeah, and that's, you gotta have some reserve there too, you know? I mean, I'd love to spend eighty, hundred thousand dollars on streets, but if it's, I just don't think that's really smart. Not that, go that route. Some of it, yes, but I think we need to make, we gotta set all the, seems what I'm finding with, 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 and new to this, you guys, some of you've been at it more, longer than I, we get, we get focused on, few of us get focused on the fire department, a few of us get focused on the police department. Somebody's over here worried about tourism, instead of looking at the big picture and bringing everything together and put all that stuff aside. You know what? Community, there's a word in there, it's unity, and we gotta do better with that. We gotta do it better in our community. Everywhere we go, we got disagreements and we gotta do better at bringing that together. And if we don't do it here, well, guess what? It's not gonna happen on the streets out there. It's not gonna happen in the neighborhoods. And we're not gonna heal everything, we're not gonna fix all the city's problems, but it's our responsibility as a group, right now as leaders, community leaders and servants, is to, is to work towards the betterment of the, of the community and of the city of St. Genevieve, you know? It's great, I'd love to have a new City Hall, but you know what? Let's be realistic, we're not Chesterfield. We need, we need, we can fix up what we have here and make improvements. The fire department, when you guys built the firehouse over there, it's a beautiful structure that I'm very proud of when I come into town and everybody sees it. And we're making arrangements for them to have good equipment to do their job. Just like our, the police department, we, our guys need to have good equipment and a good place to work. I don't know about any of you, but you go into your homes, I'm sure your homes are, you, you update once in a while. We need to do the same thing at City Hall and it costs money, you know, but we gotta be smart about it and we gotta work together.
That's why I'm saying, and, and it's an oversimplification, but a balanced approach to it.
Right.
You, you can't just throw all your eggs in one basket.
But we gotta get moving, folks. We gotta move on it. We can't, it's great to think through it, I love it and, and weigh all the consequences, but you do that, but we gotta get moving. We need to start moving. And you know what? This bond issue, I know that that's gonna be a hardship for some folks, but you know what? I'm paying taxes in the city. I'm the same, but you know what? I wanna see some thing, I wanna see some things happening, you know? Let the people decide it. If the people don't want it, fine. That's okay, but let them decide, not us. Let the city, let the people decide. Maybe they won't, maybe they won't, but at least I can say, well, we come up with something. We didn't just sit on our hands and not do anything. And if, if it is busting it down to two million, that's okay, let's do. And if, if it is busting it down to two million, that's okay, let's do the two million. If we can, put it out there, maybe we, but here's what we're gonna do with that money. What do you, do you wanna do it, you know? So we're at with everything, we gotta, we gotta start thinking that way.
So if, if, if a four million dollar bond issue is, what was the percentage of increase? Sixty-two? Okay, so is it linear then? If we did a two million, is it thirty-something percent then?
Not exactly, yeah.
But give or take. Man, yeah. Of course, two million dollars, I mean, it doesn't get you far, but yet you, you should be able to see it.
Oh, you'll see it.
You'll see it.
Yeah.
You'll see it. I'm all for doing something, I, I, you know, we don't.
Well, as long as it's put, as long as it's put to the people, that they can decide, I.
Last year, the county was questioning the city, well, before last year, but finally last year, they demanded an answer whether the city was using the bridge and road, the capital improvement.
Right.
Fund, transportation tax fund. And so I put together a list of projects, and I took it to them, and they kinda went, oh, we didn't know that because we never go on Westwood.
Right.
We never go on, we, it's just that the streets we go on, nobody was doing anything to.
That's okay, that's a check and balance.
That's kinda what we'll do. If you do two, two million dollars, if you want anybody to see it, well, you gotta do two or three main thoroughfares.
Right, right.
But if you're gonna do Audubon, they're gonna be twenty people who are really happy.
Well, yeah. So where does this leave us?
I can, you know, we've got eight hundred thousand dollars in the capital fund, we've gotta hold back some for the Corps of Engineers maybe. We really only have, if we hold back five hundred thousand, we really have three hundred thousand to spend. About June or May, you know, I, we'll have a sense of where our sales tax revenues are. We can kinda project what we can spend on road improvements. Maybe we wait till then.
Well, there's.
Take what we've got in the bank, add to it, revenues that, you know, for, for capital improvements, and probably have five hundred thousand dollars, maybe six hundred thousand to spend next year.
Is it, is it any cheaper? Do you save money by, by ordering a large group, a, a large amount of work at one time?
The bigger the project, the lower the unit cost.
Right, and, and they would count as one project if it's four different streets, but we put it all on the same thing, then is that one project?
So, within reason, I got, I mean, it can't be.
Right, so say, you know, say, okay, do these four streets, that's gonna be this amount. Do this street, this street, this street, and this street, separate things, it is more.
Basically, the, the, the product cost is the same. I mean, a, a ton of asphalt's a ton of asphalt.
Right.
But the.
Labor costs are.
The labor costs are generally the same, but they're kinda fixed costs get split out over a larger, larger number of units. So their mobilization and their insurance and this, and, you know? But it's not, in, in this, in this order of magnitude, it's not gonna be a significant.
And, and Dick, to answer your question about, and not to be, I don't mean to be harsh or anything else about it, but to say that, you know, what we did for the police department, all we did for the police department was try to get them somewhere up to a, a fair wage and a scale to do. I'm sorry, but you look at, I mean, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at, and we're looking at the sign of the times, and you just seen it last Sunday. How in the world can you wrap your head around, and if you don't think that can happen in this little town, you are nuts. It's just, it can happen anywhere. So you have to have, you have to have, you, you need to have that, we need to have good people, competent people, and.
But you could have had a thousand policemen in that.
I, I get it, I get it, but, but we need to, they're fighting it in St. Louis, they just, the people overwhelmingly passed the tax to pay their officers more. The problem they have at the county, they're suffering now. They're gonna have to pass up, because county officers, they're short a hundred officers, because they're leaving, because their health insurance is, they're paying nineteen thousand dollars a year for a family healthcare, and they're leaving, so.
Jefferson County, I'm sorry.
I, I fully believe we needed to do that, that, that thing. I don't know if it went entirely the way everybody on the board thought it was supposed to go, but I, I, I certainly feel like we needed to raise that. I don't, but, well. But, but if you look at, if you look at that, if you look at adding an officer, um, now you gotta add a car, now you're gonna add some space for that, that office, what does, what did that really cost you? And that's gonna cost you that much every year. It's not like a one-time thing. And I, you know, and if you look at that in relationship to the rest of the budget, I think you spent a lot of budget on that particular department this year, and I, 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 again, it's just my opinion as one board member. I, it's just a priority.
And I respect that, yeah, and I, I respect that. But we spent a lot of money on tourism too. That's pretty important.
Absolutely.
You, 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 you know what that's all about, and you know what that means to this city, you know? That's a lot of money we spend in tourism, you know? So to, to get what we have, where do we cut? Where do you cut?
I, I fully agree, I, there's, yeah, you can look at the budget, and you might get a little bit out of it, but you're certainly not gonna do anything major as far as streets go.
You know, I think we run a pretty tight ship, I.
I, I believe we do.
But I don't disagree with John, it never hurts to look at it.
Right, I encourage it.
It should always be open for review, you know? But I, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think we need to come back next month. Think about it, we're gonna have another meeting and have another work session next month and make some decisions. We need to make a decision on that right there. We need to make a decision. We've made some good decisions tonight with the, with the street and the, and enforcing the, the, our code, you know? But, and then make a decision on this road, what do we wanna do? Are we gonna? If we're gonna do, if we're gonna do nothing, that's fine, I, I got nothing, that's okay. But also, if we're gonna do something, we need to decide to do it. Because we can sit and beat it around and talk about it all we want, and we gotta make it, we need to make some decisions. Eric, you have any, you have something to say?
I, I can withdraw our request, it's not worth.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
I said, I, I'm willing to withdraw our request, we don't need to be any more of a drawl on the city budget than we already are.
I, the thing is, we're, we're still obligated to do part of it regardless. We have to do the separation, right?
Yes.
Okay. You gotta do some work on this building upstairs here. Otherwise, we're gonna come down and it'll, it'll burn to the ground one of these days. And then there again, we're enforcing codes, we, we need to do, there's some things we need to do here. Now, do we need to do all that? I don't, I don't know. It's okay, we don't, there's some things we're gonna have to do, and maybe we don't have to spend that kind of, we're gonna have to spend some money to fix some things. We're gonna have to spend money or come up with money to fix roads. It's not gonna happen, we can do what we're doing, and if that's the plan going forward for the next whatever, a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, that's, that's okay, we'll do that. When the people complain, we'll, we'll deal with that too, you know, we always do, so. Other than that, I don't have any more. Anybody else have anything before we close up? I'm ready to go home.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, I know that was gonna be tough, but thank you.